Thank you for your patience with our slight delay. It is 7:05 PM on November 10th. This is the Hatfield School Committee, and my name is Rebecca Bench. I'm calling this meeting to order. The first item on our agenda is public comment. So we'll start with anybody in person for a public comment. And we'll move to those who are joining us remotely today. If you would like to make a public comment, if you could please put that in the chat, we will call on you. And if you're on phone, just unmute yourself and let me know.
I'm not seeing anybody.
All right. Seeing no indications for those who want to make a public comment, we will move on in the agenda. Today, I would like to take some agenda items out of order as we have some guests joining us. So I would like to start with item eight for social justice and equity. We have some student representatives here to present for the school committee.
Good evening to everyone. First, I'd like to thank the school committee for providing our group with this opportunity to represent ourselves before you all today. My name is Angela Rivero. I'm the president and co-founder of Smith Academy's Student Equity Alliance. As a Black student who's attended Smith for almost four years, I've recognized and big subject to the very prevalent behaviors of discrimination, racism, and prejudice that have been displayed amongst our student body. When I entered Smith as a seventh grade student, I was put in situations in which I was unsuspectingly met with these vile expressions of hate and forced into situations in which I had to deal with them alone due to the lack of genuine acknowledgement of such actions by past school administrations and the scarce number of concerned or affected students to speak out against them. I now, as a junior, find myself hearing about and seeing the same narrative unfolding before the younger generation of minority students at Smith. By not addressing these issues, we become complicit, and the ability to ignore them is a demonstration of the privilege allotted to those who are not personally affected by them. The sad but realistic truth is that in the current state of American society, encounters with racism are generally inevitable for people of color inside or outside of school. This cycle of avoidance to these detrimental issues must be broken for the growth of tolerance, and we, as the Student Equity Alliance, aim to achieve this communal growth by upholding our mission statement, which is as follows. It is the goal of the Smith Academy Student Equity Alliance to form, promote, and protect initiatives designed to uphold the nondiscrimination and anti-harassment policies mandated by the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education in Smith Academy. We believe education is the best tool to utilize to combat prejudice and intolerance in the school environment. I emphasize our belief in education over punishment. We affirm that information is the most effective way to combat harmful bias, predilection, and intolerance that lead to discrimination and plan to utilize it as our main source of influence on the student body and first response to offensive behavior, although it should not mitigate consequential punishment by the school administration for gravely offensive or harmful behavior. We also recognize that even with access to proper education and exposure, many will still subscribe to discriminatory values. This does not deter our goal to help growth of our school into a tolerant environment in which all students feel safe and comfortable regardless of their race. Some examples of how we will implement our goals are through professional development, culturally relevant teaching, explicit lessons on race and conflict resolution, community partnerships, and advocacy. Due to the intertwined nature of race and politics, it must be specified that we, the Student Equity Alliance, are not politically affiliated. There are no partisan conceptions attached to the prevention of discrimination. Racism is objectively wrong, and the protection of the safety and livelihood of students of color is not up for political debate. Despite this, many commonly shared and promoted ideologies have profoundly racist origins or implications, which are not only morally wrong, but a threat to the susceptible minds of young impressionable students, especially those with limited exposure to diversity, such as any Smith Academy attendees. If we do not educate students on these uncomfortable subjects or address these fundamentally incorrect and prejudiced viewpoints, they are left unaware and will continue to promote them. We appreciate the support and effort of our more recently developed administration, and with your help, we know it is possible to create a community of inclusivity for all students. We thank you greatly for your time and consideration. I conclude with a quote from our first African-American president, Barack Obama. "Change will not come if we wait for some other person or if we wait for some other time. We are the ones we've been waiting for. We are the change that we seek." Thank you. And we're open to any questions also.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. Thank you so much. Would committee members like to offer any questions? Or is there anything else to add from Chris or from the other students?
Yeah, I mean, one of the things that Angela and Maddie and Ben were talking about was a kind of a forum for conversation with staff and for students around sensitive issues that have been brought up or polemic issues that are brought up in CREW. And so this is, I think it's really interesting that in the past, let's say, 18 months, this has developed as a genuine student-driven body out of a structure that we put in place to provide space for student conversation and adult conversation. So I think it speaks volumes about Angela, Maddie, and Ben taking this on, and it is gathering momentum. I know you have lots of people interested in joining, and if we're generally talking about diversity and inclusion and empathy, I think that's vital and it intertwines nicely with the SEL focus for the school and district as a whole. So, you know, I'm thankful that... It speaks volumes. An adult can ask a child to do something, but when the... I mean, I don't mean to patronize. An adult can ask a student to do something, but if the students are creating the movement and doing the activity and holding the narrative, then that's more powerful than any educator can be in the room. So, you know, I just commend you for starting and pushing this forward. Thank you.
I echo everything Mr. Buckland just said. I think it's really fantastic that you guys have taken the initiative. My question, though, I'm going to direct to your principal first because it has to do with budget. So is this group considered an extracurricular activity that would fall under some kind of umbrella that would have a budget afforded to it, such that if there were trainings or support or materials that this group wanted to use to their ends, that we would be able to help fund that?
So I think at the moment, it's a purely voluntary setup, but it does fall under the scope of what we budget and allocate for CREW, both in terms of the coordination and the content delivery. But I think there's also room for looking further about, you know, embedding this in the foundation of our activities and our stipended positions outside. I know we have GSA, and we have chess club, and we have all sorts of different groups and organizations within the school. But I think this, because it's so embedded in CREW, which is part of our superstructure, if you want, this cries out to have a sustaining financial setup for it. And it isn't necessarily to have a teacher driving it, it's just to have somebody facilitating because ultimately, it's student-driven. And that's the, I guess, that's the difficult nuance difference between a stipended club activity and this organization.
Okay. But the bottom line of that is, there is funding available. Should this group want or highlight something, they would bring it to you to seek funding?
Yeah. I think it would fall under the banner of our social emotional supports, which would be CREW and the teaching therein.
Great to know.
And I can add, I mean, because I think it's almost like a pincer movement, a photocop... Can I steal one back? Sorry. I was zealous in my counting. I just wanted to pass that down. Can you pass it on to the... So I asked the CREW advisors to come along today, and unfortunately, there's a variety of circumstances preventing them, but they did put together this mini kind of presentation. And this kind of goes hand in glove with what Maddie, Angela, and Ben were talking about. This is the official, or the organized... Oh, thanks. The framework of CREW in which a lot of the ideas and a lot of the themes that the three students mentioned earlier on are formally talked about and set up. So it's kind of to provoke conversation and to enable students to move on beyond the classroom with a teacher to a student-oriented setup. And I see it as a very, kind of a college, or it needs a maturity and a certain independence and empathy to be part of this group and having these mature conversations at this time. So I don't really want to go through it word by word, but it's there just to give you the idea that the fundamentals are looking at character skills and student quality and student characteristics that are going to be lifelong attributes. And then it's really talking about how the... Each CREW is a small organization of, you know, 10 to 12 students, and the CREW motif comes from being part of a boat. If you're all on the boat, rowing in the same direction, you're going to make some headway there. So everybody has to be pulling in part of the process there. And the culture of the CREW is that it is going to be messy, there are going to be disagreements, but it's about empathizing and seeing different perspectives that we hope are the kind of the skills and abilities that students can apply outside of this particular block. And the Equity Alliance is a great real-life context to do that and to have those conversations. And the routine this year, it was kind of a... We had an idea of what it might be, and we tried that, and we've reflected, and we've got student feedback and all these kind of different perspectives on things. So we've got a solid routine for having a student council element, specific CREW time and lunch. So there's an element of independent work for students if they wanted to go off and do whatever they wanted to do in student, in the study hall, but also they can have conversations facilitated by a CREW advisor in the CREW section. And then the nice thing about this is that some weeks, the student council can determine and dictate exactly what happens in CREW. So it really is a forum assisted by lots of teachers at that particular moment where whole-school things can happen driven by students. And the hope is that as circumstances allow, we can move forward and think about assemblies and having guests coming in. And then the last piece is to echo Angela, Maddie, and Ben. It's about building a relationship or a mini culture that will allow you to start to have conversations about equity, inclusivity, and also provide the opportunity for students, such as these three great examples here, for self-organization involvement outside the walls of Smith Academy. And I'd like to say that this has been... We've been very fortunate to have teachers jumping on board and also students jumping on board, and I think it involved a lot of buy-in over the last 18 months. And I think now we're seeing the fruits of that buy-in, and I, you know, it's not always going to be smooth, and it's not always going to be bumpy, and it's not always going to be nice because we're going to hear the feedback that perhaps isn't going to be particularly pleasant, but it means that we have a conversation and we can have a dialogue, and we can change. And when we know better, we do better. And I think that's the most important thing that we can take out of this.
I have a really simple question about CREW that I've never quite caught up with. What determines what CREW you're in as a student?
That would be down to staff. Usually, we think about putting grade seven together, grade eight together, and the idea back in BC, before COVID, was to think, okay, we can maybe loop people through. So you get a really solid group of students and a teacher that really knows them well. But then looking at the fact that Smith Academy is quite a small environment, it's nice to kind of build up layers of interactions across grade levels. So it might be nine and 10, or 11 and 12. So at the moment, we're looking at keeping people in particular grade levels, but then as we become more confident and as students start to determine that they want to have a little bit more scope and more interaction, I think it would be great to kind of double up with the grade level. So it would be nine and 10, 11 and 12, and seven and eight.
And they all meet, so all your different CREW classrooms meet at the same time from 10:30 to 12:00?
Yeah. If you set your clock on Thursday, that's what's happening, depending on the lunch break. Yeah. And just mentioning the feedback, we've just finished our quarter-one survey of students, teachers, and families, and that's a living document. That's provided quite a lot of interesting observations about CREW, the content, the process, and so forth, and that's shared with everybody so we can kind of have a real dialogue about how to go forwards with that. There's some things we can control, some things we can't control, but at least we've got a conversation about what works and what doesn't work.
Have you found there's any common misperception about CREW that you might clear up for us as a community?
I mean...
There may not be one. I don't know, but through your feedback...
From, I can speak from an administrator and an adult who thought this was a good idea to do it in the first place. I mean, I think a misconception from, or rather, a misunderstanding from, let's say, an adult's perspective, it's a content area that perhaps they may not be well-versed in. So for my perspective, it means we have to be very deliberate about how we support and organize and create spaces for advisors to take on and grow in confidence and deliver this material. And I think another misconception is, it's easy to create a conversation between eight kids in a room and talk. If you're teaching calculus, maybe you don't want those conversations, but if you're sitting in a room with the only thing you're going to talk about is inclusivity or something that's happened in the news that perhaps is controversial, there's an awful lot of silence. And I think that's the first part in building up the strength of this program and the relationships is to kind of have that wait time, get through the silence, and have the confidence to break that silence and know that if you break that silence, and perhaps what you say is not as inclusive as it could be, you're fine because we're going to think about how the impact of that is, or what is the impact on somebody else. How can we change your perspective, or how can we not change your perspective, but how can we change the way you convey your ideas? And so you're a little bit more empathetic, a little bit understanding of other people that perhaps you don't see eye-to-eye naturally with. Does that make sense?
So how many teachers do you have? Is every CREW team is led by a teacher?
Teacher, yeah.
And there's how many now?
Twenty-two.
And is that... And do teachers volunteer?
We worked out through the circumstances under which we, I think, was it the MOA or the MOU? Last year with COVID, we had this as a built-in part of the structure in the day. And then when we changed from hybrid back to CBA, we worked with the union to create a memorandum of understanding to put this in the stipended position in the contract. So these are stipended positions, but the understanding is that they're stipended at the same rate as, let's say, an X-block whereby you would turn up and talk, rather than there's a great deal of preparation. Because the other side is that we created the stipended position for three coordinators to do the research and to create the lesson plans and to sort of distribute the information to the other teachers.
And right now, the groups are formed based on grade level because of COVID?
No, no, just that's kind of how we... Yeah. We felt it might be easier for middle school to kind of have the capacity to have individual group seven and group eight classes, so there are six of them. Or if we wanted to have an assembly or something together, we could put the middle school together. Like last week when we had the careers fair, we put all of the seven and eight together during that block of time because they were looking at careers related to computer science as opposed to nine and 10 that we're looking at slightly more, you know, likes and interests and 11 and 12, so a little bit more advanced, and we're looking at actual interviews with people doing jobs.
Okay. And those groups are, the group that you're in for CREW right now is slightly, is randomized?
Within your grade level, yeah. You, I mean, invariably, you're going to know these people because there is not a great deal of kids in each particular grade level, grade 12 apart.
And then you look at topics that are relevant per that cohort?
Exactly.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
I have one quick question. Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Can you hear CREW mandatory?
Yes, yes, it is. It's part of the curriculum, it's part of the day.
I just have a clarifying question about the Student Equity Alliance. So thank you again. Thank you so much for coming. I really appreciate your coming to speak with us and, you know, the initiative and the passion that you've demonstrated. I love it. So you said that, you know, the SCA was sort of born out of CREW, but it's student-led, student-initiated. At this point, is there like, I guess I wasn't clear on if, like, there's faculty or how that's working?
We talked about how this might work, and one of the ideas was just to have an adult facilitator there to basically, you know, have the parameters of what could or couldn't be. But we didn't want to kind of give the impression that it was being policed or there was somebody overseeing what goes on. It was just genuinely a forum to have robust conversation in alignment with it. Yeah, sorry, Maddie, go.
Yeah, I didn't know.
Oh, I didn't. Sorry.
I wasn't sure what I had to do. As of right now, our plan is to meet once a week after school with... We have two teachers who have agreed to help us out. Within our group, we have asked people the level of commitment and the level of worth that they're willing to put into it, and we have made it so... We've asked the people who have agreed to do more to come weekly, but we are going to make it public to the school when we are meeting, so anybody who wants to can come to the meetings and can talk with us and bring up their own issues and be there for the discussion.
Thanks.
So you have teachers who have sort of agreed to help facilitate, but you're still determining schedule, determining your goals, your objectives, everything still from...
Yes.
Awesome. Awesome. And at this point, the Student Equity Alliance, it's all like an after-school thing. It's like an extracurricular.
I mean...
Sort of.
I would say...
A student-led activity after-school.
We started independently, and we decided that it was in our best interest to work within the school and within the town. And we have been lucky enough to get resources within and outside of the school that are helping us to get our plans and our goals into action.
Maddie, do you want to talk a little bit about the work outside of the school?
Yes. I have connected to the Hatfield Equity Alliance, and I went to a meeting with them, and we discussed, you know, connecting resources and working together in the future to enact things outside of school. Obviously, our primary focus will be within the school, but we want to, once we have the footing and the resources, we want to do what we can to make as much change as possible. And that, for us, would be moving outside of the school and going to more town-wide initiatives.
And I think next staff meeting or next faculty meeting, one of your group is going to come and talk to the faculty, is that right?
When is that?
I think, I think it's next week or the week ahead. Maybe it's not you.
I'll be there.
I believe that's what's going to happen. I'll have to check my teacher sources.
Any other questions or comments from the committee? Thank you.
Thanks for coming in.
Yeah, of course. Thank you so much. Y'all for having us.
First.
All right. All right. So we thank our students Angela, Maddie, and Ben for coming to present to us.
Thank you.
We will move on in the agenda, and again, I am going to take some things out of order. So I would like to move to item number four to have our discussion of the co-op for lacrosse, if Allison would like to join us.
All right. Good evening. So I was reached out to by Smith Vocational fairly recently. After last year's COVID year, they were struggling to come up with enough numbers to sustain a lacrosse program. And we, the athletic director at Smith Vocational and I, he reached out to me and said, hey, do you have any students who would be interested? And I was like, huh, let me just think about this. And a couple of years ago, I put out a survey to students and asked if they, BC before COVID, and asked if they would be interested in girls' lacrosse and boys' lacrosse if they had the opportunity to play. So this is a spring sport. We currently have baseball and softball. And our current spring sports, the last two seasons that we've had, we've had too many for one team, but not really enough for two teams with regards to like JV and varsity. So our numbers are kind of like, again, too many for one, like it's just a lot of kids. But with baseball and softball, you have to make sure that you're really aware of pitching stuff and making sure you have enough people on the bench for arms, and there's pitch count limitations for baseball. So right now, we've been on the cusp of that in-between number, between having two teams and one team. And when I gave out this survey a couple of years ago, there were probably, there were six to eight students who were girls, six to eight students who identified as males, who would come out and commit to playing girls' lacrosse or boys' lacrosse. I also, in that survey, asked them if they were a current spring athlete or if they weren't. So it would give me a sense of knowing how many people would, in that case, abandon their current sport that they play to then jump ship to play lacrosse. And there were only about two girls and two boys from out of those groups of six to eight and six to eight who said that they would stop playing softball to go play lacrosse or stop playing baseball to go play lacrosse. And with that number around two, it wouldn't deter or detract from our current numbers or our ability to have a baseball team or a softball team. So with that in mind, when the Smith Vocational Athletic Director reached out to me and said, hey, we're struggling for numbers, is this something that you would be interested in? I immediately thought back to the survey that I had given, and I was like, oh, like, we did have a cohort of students who would be interested in playing. So we went through the proper channels of applying for a co-op. So it's been approved by the PVIAC, and then after it gets approved by the PVIAC, which is the members of athletic directors of our region in Western Mass, it then goes ahead to the MIAA. So we went through with all this paperwork and all of the red tape, if you will, and it got approved by the MIAA as well. And then the last step is for it to get approved by the administration and the school committee. So Smith Vocational would be the host school. It would be of no cost to us whatsoever. They have committed to hiring the coaches, purchasing any equipment, supplying the field and the... The only thing that we need to do is provide the students, including all the co-ops that we've ever had in the past, whether we're hosting them or whether we go to other schools, the students are required to transport themselves there in some way. So there would be no transportation costs to us. It's kind of part of the co-op thing. Like, if you can make it work, if you really want to play, you'll make it work somehow. I mean, this year, this fall for field hockey, we've had a student athlete from Hopkins Academy who's been coming over and came over to practice every single day, comes over to games, rides the bus, does everything, and her family situation figured it out, and she was able to make it work, which was awesome. And again, Smith Voc has tried to have a girls' team and a boys' team over the last couple of years, and they just need some help sustaining their program. And that's kind of the purpose of a co-op, is if you can't sustain the program yourself, you can then reach out to another school. So you can't go like seeking to form this like super-team between schools. This is something where they've tried an honest effort on their own, and they reached out saying that if we have players who are interested, that we could form a co-op. Let's see. We, and just for like numbers sake, just letting you know, we have 72 fall student athletes right now, which is a large number. We've got field hockey, girls' soccer, boys' soccer. And in the spring, the last two seasons that we've had, there have only been 44 student athletes that have gone out for a spring sport. So to me, that says that there are 28-plus other student athletes who are student athletes for other seasons who are athletic and would maybe want to play something that are just kind of sitting in the spring and twiddling their thumbs because they may not like softball or baseball, or that might not be their game. And to me, the fact that this co-op could exist provides a ton of opportunities for students who are in the building who don't currently play softball and baseball, but who have an interest in being in athletics in some way, shape, or form. It would give them the opportunity to play. And it would also provide Smith Vocational with the opportunity for them to have a team as well, even though that's not the reason why we're doing it. But it's allowing a bunch of their student athletes to participate as well if they have our support. And then my other reason as to why I feel like we should move forward with this is, and this is sort of a byproduct of having this happen hopefully, is that it makes us way more marketable as well. Like, we can say that we are offering another sport, and again, I know the main concern is that it would take away from our current programs, but based off of the surveys that I gave, and I know COVID has changed a lot of things, and based off of previous responses and based off of our current numbers for softball and baseball, I don't think that it would impact our ability to still have varsity program for both softball and baseball. It would only just add to what we currently have. So that's my spiel.
Just a quick question, just to clarify that I had.
Yep.
Does Smith Voc currently do lacrosse, or did they? And then they had to stop the... I just want to...
Yeah. Last year during COVID, they were going to try, but then with all of the, like, city of North Hampton limits and limitations and the fact that a lot of kids were just not accessible for doing sports at that point, they didn't do anything that year. But the previous year, they, I think their boys' team in particular was able to get some like scrimmage-type games in. And then the other caveat for if this were to go through, we would... And then the other caveat for if this were to go through, we would not be like jumping into a league and playing like other top-notch schools in lacrosse because this would be new to a whole bunch of student athletes. So for like safety purposes and being able to kind of dip your toe in the water, it would be like an independent like JV-level schedule where we would sort of, or the Smith Vocational Athletic Director would make game arrangements with other schools specifically for the purposes of like, let's develop this and let's get some good competition so we can learn and keep pushing forward, with the hopes of being able to request to then join a league at some point if the program is sustainable with both schools and there's enough interest.
But Smith Voc has all the infrastructure, the coaches and everything else?
Yep, the part of going through the application process for the co-op for both the PVIAC and the MIAA involves the host school signing off, saying that we assume responsibility for the costs of the program as if it was a sport at our school. And they did have the funding approved to have this program over the last couple of years, so.
Awesome.
Yep.
Would we be the only other school feeding onto that team?
Yes, yep.
Is there a minimum number that they need from us?
So when we put in the application, we had, we gave that range, that like six to eight that were interested previously, so we're hoping to hit in that range. That's what they were saying that would work for them. So, I mean, technically, yes, there is a minimum to be able to like play in the game, but I think they just wanted to get this going and passed with the hopes that then we can advertise for it and get the word out and get people excited about it, and then hope that the numbers that we do end up getting are enough. So by passing this and approving this, we're just giving this a chance and a shot to actually happen. At the end of the day, maybe only four kids from Smith Academy end up wanting to commit to play lacrosse, and then it doesn't end up happening. But at least this would open the door to try to have that happen.
Have you done a more recent survey?
Not a more recent survey, no. We were going to wait until it got approved before we started drumming up interest, and yeah.
What happens with our other sports that kids pay an athletic fee?
So.
What would happen with this?
Usually with co-ops, when another school is the host school, it depends on the school. So Greenfield High School, when we have our ice hockey co-op, which just stopped because we don't have any more students interested, they ended up putting through a special request for the school to pay like $300 to support the ice time and the whatever. So like they asked the schools that were part of their co-op to contribute money, but usually we don't charge a user fee because the user fee would go to us, and it seems like we're not hosting it, and the expenses aren't coming to us, so we don't usually charge a user fee for us.
But what about the other school? If the other school has a user fee?
I'm not sure, they would have to, they would have to let me know. I don't know if they usually do user fees or how much because every school is different, but that could be something I could find out. I mean, it would only be helpful to them as a courtesy to be able to host us, but.
And this is for one co-ed team or?
This is for a girls' team and a boys' team.
Okay.
Which they have made attempts at both. They've been a little bit more successful with the boys because they started it one year earlier, so they were able to get those scrimmage-type games. The girls, they have not gotten to that point with the scrimmage games, but they're hoping to get to that point with this co-op. But yeah, two separate teams.
And I'm assuming this is a one-year agreement?
Yes, yep. There are two-year ones, but starting off, yes, the one-year.
When do kids have to commit? When do they?
We usually will do like, registration for winter sports is closing on November 15th, and the season starts on November 29th. So we usually try to give a couple of weeks for our school nurse to clear everybody. I don't know what Smith Voc's timeframe usually is on that. You can technically open registration whenever, so if, maybe it benefits him to open it up on the early side so that we can actually see how many students would commit in the spring, but I'm not sure when they're going to open theirs. They would have to go through the registration process through our school to like fill out our like family ID, which has all the like information. They would have to be cleared by us before they then can go start playing there. So, yeah. So we could open registration too, whenever.
Does the administration have a perspective on this? Chris?
I think it's great if we can offer another sport and raise the profile, and I know lots of, lots of kids are interested in playing it, but we don't offer it, so. Yeah, I think it's great.
I concur. I think the two pieces of information that, you know, was shared were the number of athletes who are essentially having downtime. I mean, they may be seeking other events and sports privately, but the second piece would be, it would be attractive for us to keep kids at the Smith Academy if we offered more sports.
All right. I'll make a motion to approve the co-op for lacrosse with Smith Voc as presented.
I'll second. Any other discussion from committee members?
No, but I really appreciate the presentation, having kind of the whole scope presented to us. Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. We will vote. Danielle is remote today, so.
Does Danielle have questions?
Yeah, no, okay. Just because Danielle is remote, I'm just going to do a roll call vote, if that's okay with everyone, since that's the. So we'll start with Danielle, if that's all right.
Stanish, aye.
Maloney, aye. Bench, aye.
Boudreaux, aye.
Engelhardt, aye.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Allison.
Thank you, Allison.
All right. Let's get back on track with our agenda, if that's okay. And we'll move to the Business Affairs section of the meeting, starting with the approval of meeting minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of October 25th. And I only had one small little thing that I am being picky about. In number seven, it says that you nominated.
Oh.
Kristi and I. It should be appointed because nomination would imply that there would be a vote afterwards. And I just didn't want, if anybody's reading this, to be looking for where the vote was.
Good catch.
So that is my only amendment. But nobody seconded mine.
I will second your.
Thank you.
Approval with edits.
Any other edits or comments for the school committee? Thank you for sending the attachments.
And again, it needs to have who took the minutes listed on here.
I think we have to duel that out. I don't know if technically I am or if you are, so.
Yeah. I mean, you wrote the minutes, I just looked at them.
I'll add it.
Okay.
Just for the official record to have.
Yeah.
Right. Anything else? All right, if there's nothing else, I think we're just going to stick to roll call votes today, so. Go ahead, Danielle. Maloney, aye. Bench, aye.
Boudreaux, aye.
Engelhardt, aye.
All right, wonderful, thank you. I do not have any correspondence. Did you have anything additional? Okay. Great, so we will move along to our administrative reports. You can start with Superintendent Wood.
So a lot of what I have to say probably will be going into more depth by each of the principals. Tomorrow is Veterans Day, we are off, and then we have a PD day on Friday, so just for our parents and the community to be aware. We've had more COVID cases come through our pool testing, so certainly suggests that pool testing is working. We also have great cooperation from our parents in terms of telling us when they are privately found out that their children are positive, so that's been very helpful. True Care, who's the company that's been working with Nurse Jean and Nurse Martha to get set up, is finally staffed, so depending on what the final count is for Monday, the Army National Guard is going to phase out, but they still, we still may keep them based on information. We're working with the Board of Health to have a flu, not flu, excuse me, a COVID vaccination clinic, possibly on November 19th or 24th. I think Connor and I agree that the 19th probably is better, so we'll hopefully get that finalized and publicized so that folks will, you know, be able to make decisions about having their children vaccinated. We have been having some heating issues at the Heflin Elementary School. Interestingly, sometimes when the boiler is off, we've been having heating issues, and sometimes when it's been on, it's been heating issues. So we've had some work being done there to fix that, and I think right now it's relatively fixed.
Are you warm or are you cold?
It's been warm.
Yes. Just nuts.
Yeah.
Both.
It's been really hard, so that's been addressed, to be sure. We recently had an offer of a flagpole to be donated to our athletic fields, and so Mr. Buckland is working on the details of that. We'll bring that donation to you as an acceptance of a gift because those are pretty expensive, so you need to do that. We were able to, Nurse Jean, back in probably early August, had applied for donations of masks and gloves and the hand sanitizer, and so we were able to secure that with, in total, in total, we were given six pallets of material for both, one, six for each school. When we realized that, we said, no, no, that's really way too much. So I went there, we sorted it all out, we did take two pallets of material, so we're pretty much set for certainly this year and well into next year. So hopefully that won't be the case, but we'll have the material. Molly Brumner and I were at the November 5th, a superintendent's meeting where Associate Commissioner Russell Johnston attended, and she has some material to talk about as well, but basically it was a great opportunity for him to meet area directors of special education. He now oversees both general ed and special ed, which is nice, the combination. So we had a nice time to talk about a lot of different things in terms of student needs and dyslexia work by general education and also addressing staff shortages, so it was a good Q and A time. Think I formally told you, but Brian Moriarty has been appointed by the town to be our member for our contract talks. So we both have teacher contract talks and we have paraprofessional contract talks to attend to this spring, so we'll have to talk about scheduling that, so we will do that. So I know that the, Mr. Buckland has been working hard on planning a class trip. I think it's morphed to what we're going to be doing, which is Nature's Classroom. So we will, at the December meeting, bring to you the information and go through the timeline of how it got to where it is, and bring it to you for approval per policy so that you'll have that information. And I just want to, on a personal note, bring the school committee up to date. I think, I know I did, at my first interview, I said I was having some hearing problems, and so they finally were able to diagnose that, and so I have a small tumor in my ear canal, and so I'm going to have some surgery next week. They were able to get me in quickly, which was nice, so I'll get that out and hopefully be able to hear again 100%. So I haven't been ignoring anybody, I just sometimes have to look at you twice to really concentrate on what you're saying. So my, my plan is, she said it was two weeks, I never really follow that advice, so I hope to definitely be able to work remotely very quickly, and so, but I'll keep you posted as to when I'm actually physically back in the office. I hope certainly by the, after Thanksgiving. That's my report.
Do committee members have any questions for Superintendent Wood? I have one quick question. You said that we found, we, I mean, I know that, you said we found cases through pool testing?
Yes.
That was through the pool testing, not test and stay?
Correct.
It was through the pool?
Yes.
I just wanted clarification.
I know, I always have to figure out which ones.
On the two types.
Yeah.
So while we're on that subject, while we have these kids are out for a couple of days, and if they were doing test and stay, what are we, we're looking at three days of test and stay if they are finding, like, what's the timeline like at this point with test, with the two days off? Is that having an impact?
It means we don't have to start tomorrow. So we, you go seven days out from the date of exposure for test and stay with, you know, the date of exposure is zero, so using today, seven days, that would be through next Wednesday, so Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday of next week.
How many grades are we now testing?
Four. Yes, not all people in all grades.
Not all of every grade.
Yeah, we have across five grades, I believe now.
Five grades, five classrooms?
Five grades, I believe, seven classrooms at this point.
At the elementary?
At the elementary.
But it's not everyone in a classroom, it's.
Correct.
It's, yeah, there are some classes where the, it is everyone in a classroom just because of the nature of who, who had it and where they were seated. Other classes, it's select kids within the classroom. So it depends on, depends on the number of students that were positive in a, in a particular place, and it depends on where, where they were located in the, in the classes.
I think that's important for people to hear because many parents were concerned hearing, oh, you got called for your kid, but my kid's in that room and I didn't get called, and worrying that they didn't get the information, so it's important for people to know that in some instances, it is only select individuals in the classroom, not an entire classroom.
Yeah, we can, we can certainly clarify that. And I wanted to correct one thing I said before. I said we, we did, we did have positives come through test and stay as well. So it was both pooled and test and stay, where that was, was helpful in identifying those cases.
Doing what it's supposed to do.
Exactly.
Correct.
And what is the current count for, for, for staff and students?
In the district.
In the district?
So I think we're up to 13.
At the elementary school.
Students at the elementary school.
Students and staff combined.
Staff combined?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So it's 10 and 3, and one of those staff does teach at both schools, and we don't have anybody left at the high school.
So only at the elementary school, 13?
Correct.
Positive. And do you know how many people are in the test and stay program now?
I think we're, you think, what, 90?
Yeah, we are, last count this afternoon is 84 students. And staff, by and large, are not, they have the opportunity, but they're not required to do test and stay. If you are a fully vaccinated individual, you do not have to take part in test and stay if you're in close contact, but we would offer it to them if, you know, if they, if they had someone in their room who was, who was confirmed positive.
So there's potentially 84 for test and stay on Monday?
On Monday, yes, that's correct. So part of what we'll be doing on Friday, I'll be talking about this in a second, is sort of dialing the systems in to make them as efficient as possible and as effective as possible, too.
Right. Any other questions for Superintendent Wood?
Is somebody going to go more in-depth about the vaccine clinic?
Danielle, the only thing I can tell you is that it's being arranged by, not by the Board of Health, but Elizabeth, blinking on her last name.
Gougler.
Gougler, is, has been talking with someone who's been able to set it up so that they could be here one of those two days.
And is it during the school day, after the school day?
You know, I didn't see the times in schedule, in it.
I believe it would be.
It would be during the day.
Well, I assumed it would be after, after school.
So those are one of the details. I didn't see the, I didn't actually see the times in the email. I don't remember seeing them.
I think you have to have the parent there.
Oh, yeah, you'd have to have a parent there and that. You'd have to have a parent there and that kind of thing, so.
I would hope so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We do have more COVID and test and stay questions, but I'll let the principals go first, I guess.
Sure.
Principal Buckland?
Do you mind if we push down to Ben?
Yes, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
I wasn't sure what part Ben was staying for.
Oh, no, no, sorry. Sorry.
No, it's okay. I would love to hear from Ben right now.
Fantastic.
That's perfect. Thank you for your patience.
Thank you for having me. So I'm here in my capacity as the student representative. I'm a member of the student council. So what we've been doing, we just come back from rounding, rousing success of Spirit Week and then a pep rally. That was really great. Pep rally, let's see, what else are we doing? We are preparing to do a winter fundraiser of some sort. We haven't fully decided what we're hoping to do, but we are hoping to give back to the community at large. I'm trying to think of other programs we're running, Mr. Buckland.
You did the elections, the student elections, you run around the classes, join crew?
Yes, yes, we did do the student elections. I don't remember the last time you guys met. Student elections went on, it's about, it's about what we're up to. It's been great. It's been a really great time to be in the community. It's great to be back in the classroom. The novelty has worn off a little bit, which, the fact that the novelty has worn off and that we're still all having such a great time, I really think speaks to how enjoyable being in the community is.
And is there, is there a breakfast coming up soon?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Buckland. We will be running the student council breakfast the day before Thanksgiving break.
Awesome.
Ben, could you tell us your full name and what grade you're in, please?
My name's Benjamin Carpenter and I am a senior.
Thank you.
And Ben, would that breakfast be 6:45 to 7:45, $5 ahead, something like that?
That is the best, to my knowledge, yes, sir.
Open to be on, open beyond just the students?
That is the hope.
Okay.
Definitely in our planning, you know, we, we have to make sure that that is okay with the COVID rules that are in place and makes sense for everybody involved. But yes, that would be the hope.
Awesome. Any questions for Mr. Carpenter? All right. Thank you for joining us.
Thank you so much for having me.
Thank you for sticking around for both presentations.
All right.
We appreciate it. Thank you for that, Mr. Buckland.
Oh, no, no, that's okay.
Thank you.
So I can, would you let me do a?
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah. So we've just wrapped up the fall sports season. We had a really good season for all of our teams. We got to the second round of the boys' date and we won the regional tournament at, the school in Springfield, his name I've forgotten. And the girls' team had a great season, but went out in the first round of the state's championship. And the hockey team went out in the second round, having made the final of the regionals. So I think we had a really good start back to normalcy. And as A.D. Slisch pointed out, registration for winter sports finishes on Monday, the 15th, and then the first practices are due to take place on the 29th. And I'm really thankful to Danielle and the rec department for working with A.D. Slisch at setting up something for the middle school boys. Invariably, we have more boys than spots on teams. And so we're, we're concerned about how we can try and support the middle school team. And we've got schedule and we've got a competition for them to play in and we've got time. And we're still looking for a volunteer to help coach. So we don't know exact numbers for this program, but I think once we have students back in the building and they've turned up to practice, they have to turn up to eight practices, first of all, then we can work out how many kids we'll be looking to coach for the middle school. And the, just a reminder for the winter sports, as of now, the Board of Health has told us that the expectation is that players and supporters wear masks at all times. There's no limit on the number of spectators at the moment and no reduction in numbers of visiting schools and fans and so forth. But the expectation is masks are on in the building for players and students alike. It's, I'm very pleased to say that the, the Spring Musical is very much on, on track to go ahead in April 21st to 23rd, the last weekend of the spring break. We're really thankful that the community helped push forward some volunteers. And we've got a director producer, a co-producer, and a musical director, and now an advisor in place. So we've got a, they're about to secure the rights for a show and I don't want to, you know, put the markers on that. So I'll, I'll reveal the name when I, when I know it and we've signed the contract on it. And we've got 13 students interested in performing and seven students interested in helping out backstage. And I think as we get more secure in what we're looking at, we'll be, I'll be talking with Dr. Driscoll about opening this up to grade five and grade six potentially and seeing how we can kind of get involvement across both schools in the district. The rehearsal schedule will start after the Thanksgiving break and I'm sure that you'll be very sick of hearing about it in every other update from now until the end of the year. Nature's Classroom Trip, Superintendent Wood spoke about that. I can give you the broad strokes. We're looking at roughly 20 students who have shown interest in a trip to Charlton, MA, Ponside for Nature's Classroom. It's always a tricky one to try and schedule because MCAS scatters throughout April and May. And we found a kind of a Wednesday, Thursday, Friday that this will work with over a three-day trip, leaving Wednesday morning and coming back Friday afternoon. So it's three days, two nights. The good thing about Nature's Classroom is that it's outside and it can be kind of heavily science and PBL-based, which kind of fits a lot of what we're doing in the classroom at the moment. Nature's Classroom provide two staff, so that's, you know, 10 to 1 ratio, and will provide us space to bring three chaperones. So there'll be five adults during this, during this trip. And we can talk through more details at the next meeting, so we can, we can go through that. The career and college readiness, that was one of the other focus points for this year. Guidance Councilor Sacks has attended the first of several MYCAP trainings and paid for through the MYCAP grant. And this will help us to continue to develop college and career program for all Smith Academy students. MYCAP is kind of like a, a, a holding vessel for lots of different elements that help students kind of create and understand and own a sort of singular vision that they want to have as they progress through the school, whether it's going to get specific training or going to a specific college or getting some internship that aligns with one of those two things. MYCAP is a, is a series of different things, such as Naviance and a program called LIFT that starts to look at what students would like to do and where they'd like to do it. And it links up with the community and businesses around. So that's, that's an exciting thing there. And November the 4th, we had a virtual careers fair for grades seven to 12. And as I said a little bit earlier, seven and eight, it took place, join crew. Seven and eight, we're looking at computer science careers and transferable skills. And grade nine, looking at starting to think about their skills and interests and how that might relate to earning money or going to college. And 10 to 12 looked at a series of pre-recorded interviews with people in the region, courtesy of junior achievement, who would usually run an in-person event, but have also got a huge bank of resources from having done this for the last two years remotely. And at this point, it would be great to start to make more formal relationships with businesses in Hatfield and surrounding areas because the next stage of this is trying to look at creating internships and potentially workplace mentoring programs for students in grade 11 and grade 12 this year and next. And the interesting thing that is kind of a light bulb moment for lots of current grade 10 students is that they can actually legitimately not be in school and earn credit for part of their day. So I'm hoping that there's going to be a mini wave of interest and outreach to businesses. Quarter one reports are uploaded to the portal this Friday. And again, the quarter one feedback surveys have been shared in the weekly newsletter. And, you know, I, I think it's a sign of a healthy district that we can have, we can solicit feedback and we can share that feedback, knowing that it may not be perfect, there may be a lot of areas to develop, but we can kind of, you know, work through that together. So I'm, I'm happy to say that, I'm happy to share that. And it's on, on the, the weekly newsletter. And it's, again, it will be part of the process for quarter two, three, and four. It was, it was, it's the first one of the year, so it was interesting to see how many people participated with, let's say, some pushing, but not, not a great deal of pushing. We had 50 of 178 student responses and 64 of 178 family responses. So it's, you know, I think that's a pretty solid first, first start. And that's it for this one.
Thank you.
Okay.
What questions do we have for Principal Buckland? Anybody? No. Okay.
All right.
Wonderful, thank you. Dr. Driscoll?
All right, thank you. So as, as Superintendent Wood said, we have, we have had some note of, close contact notifications that we've had, that we've been sending out today. We have a few different, different areas of, of contact that have happened that are, some appear unrelated. They just seem to have happened at the same time. So those close contact notifications have gone out today. As I said, we're looking at about 84, well, not about, exactly 84 notifications that went out today to students and 15 to staff. So, so they, as I said, they, many of them appear to be independent of each other, but they, they have impacted Hatfield Elementary. So we're able to follow up on a positive pool as well as with the test and stay protocols to help, you know, to help identify quickly and, and get those notifications where they, where they need to be. Special thanks to our, the help we got this week and in past weeks from the National Guard. It was just, they were invaluable in the help that they provided and the, the efficiency that they, they afforded us in the mornings when we were getting, getting things going. And particularly this week, it was really nice to have them in the school. I, I heard a number of students kind of unprompted just say, you know, expressing their thanks for their service. A number of classes made cards for them that they appreciated and were delivered to, which was great. Couple updates for you in terms of things that we have going on and, and coming up. A few social emotional learning updates, some SEL updates. One is that we've hired a new teacher at Hatfield Elementary to work with and to support students and teachers, well, to support students and work with teachers for a number of students who are expressing some higher social emotional needs, which I think is going to be, is really been beneficial and helpful. He started work this week for us. We are in the, a couple of things that I'm very excited about that are in the very beginning stages, so, so they're not, not planned out yet, but have been in communication with Chris as well as the counselor at Smith Academy to talk about some partnerships that might evolve in terms of students from Smith Academy, working with some of our older elementary students, you know, talking about topics that can span the, span the realm of friendships, social dynamics, kind of just generally how to be a solid member of the community and kind of setting up some of those mentorship partnerships between some older Smith Academy students and our older students as they transition and get ready for, for middle school. And I think it would be a really positive thing for them. And I think it would mesh very well with some of the work that's being done in crew. So kind of trying to use that as a bridge between the schools. Likewise, in terms of, in our building, we're looking at kind of developing kind of a peer mediation program to provide some leadership opportunities for our students and also to provide some, some, some more skills around how to, how to process and work through, through conflict in a, in a restorative manner for them. Along the same lines, we have a student-led effort underway right now, which is, is really exciting, to get a buddy bench up and running in our, in our playground. So we have a student who is really spearheading the effort, working with a teacher to write a grant for the bench and then to, to, to work with, with other, other students and the, the art program to get it painted and, and really nice. So we can have that as part of what we have outside. This Friday, and I'm only going to speak more about this, but one of the areas of PD we'll be focusing on is around zones of regulation and in-class supports for some, some SEL supports, too. In terms of academic updates, as, as you know, or you may know, Ms. Renee has rejoined us again in her, her capacity as the art teacher, which is fantastic. We're really happy to have her back. Additionally, she's also going to be working with some students for, with math intervention, too. So we, we're going to be having her in the times when she's not with, with art, working with art, getting trained up in our math intervention program and to be able to provide some more of those in-depth focused, focused interventions. So we're excited, we're excited to start that. And that's in addition to the program I talked about last week, the Success Maker Program, which will be more in-class and student-specific. This will be more focused with, with the program that we have, the diagnostic intervention kits that we have. We have professional development this coming Friday. We have a number of kind of trainings that we'll have throughout the day. As I mentioned, we'll have some social emotional learning training. We'll have some more focused training for all teachers in the Success Maker Program. We'll be working with Trooper Carmichael and the State Police to do a reunification and lockdown refresher. And we'll be having special ed updates as well as some focus time for our building support team as well. And that's, those are the updates from the elementary school.
Thank you.
I have a couple of questions.
Yeah. You may start. Go ahead.
You mentioned this buddy bench. What is the concept of the buddy bench? I mean, there are benches out on the playground, so what is the buddy bench?
There are. So this is a specific bench, and, and that's a great question. It would be a specific bench that would be designated as a buddy bench. So students would know that if they were feeling like they, they would like their, maybe feeling a little left out, or they would like to be invited, they could, they could find that bench. And other students would know that if they see someone on that bench, that's the time where they could go and they could invite them into a game or invite them to do something with them. It's something that's, we, I've seen them at other schools in, in past places. It's a really kind of a neat thing that they can do. I offered that we could maybe repurpose one of the benches that we have, but there is a lot of interest in getting their own bench for this and doing the work to make it and to, to make it, make it the buddy bench. So I will, I'm fully in support of, of that as well.
My other thing is more comment than a question. You talked about the bridge between the schools and having some Smith Academy students work with the older kids. I have, for a very long time, hoped that something like this would happen and had suggested it, especially for our sixth graders, to maybe even visit Smith Academy for certain things that are going on in middle school in seventh or eighth grade, to get them excited to go to Smith Academy, to see, oh, this is what happens in this building. I mean, I know they go up for their little tour in the springtime and that's great, but to get them interested in going and retaining them in our district before they start thinking of school of choice in anywhere else, but involving them in, you know, if seventh grade science is doing experiments in this, you know, maybe they have an audience or they've worked on some report, they can present it to the sixth graders at Smith Academy. So our sixth graders go there and get to see, oh, this is where I'm going to be.
Yeah.
I think that would be really helpful for some of them to, you know, get that excitement about moving up there.
I think that would be great. And today, the sixth grade took a walking field trip to the town hall, so it's not that much further to take a walking field trip up there, too. So I think, you know, I think there, there's a lot of opportunities for that. That'd be great.
I would encourage it even before sixth grade. I think that, that concept starts earlier than we.
Yes, but definitely for sixth graders who are going to be going up there, but fifth and sixth graders to go up.
Sure.
And get a taste of what they have to look forward to.
I think that's great.
Can I add in a, a big thank you because it's on topic and I meant to do it, Principal Buckland? There were a lot of high school students that came and supported Spooktacular and that was greatly appreciated. So this isn't a PTA forum per se, but they, they were a lot of help.
That's great.
And it was nice to see because it's another place that there's a bridge, just like maybe the musical will be or other, like, that's great.
You had the idea of the reading buddies. We've got some reading buddies down there now, so, the math buddies, so.
Yeah, yeah, we have, you know, just to, to follow up on that, too, I think we have, there's a lot of Smith Academy students who come down and do some great work at the elementary level. I think that's, and that's wonderful. But I love the idea of having, having, having it go the other way, too, and having our students visit Smith Academy. They would be just in awe to see, oh my goodness, you go to school here. It'd be great.
I mean, there's lots. I mean, there's lots of room with, the middle school is doing lots of kind of interesting things with Genius Hour and sort of personal projects, and they did a kind of a gallery walk amongst themselves. That would be a perfect opportunity next quarter to do something similar with that. Yeah, that'd be great, yeah.
Great.
Thank you, I love that idea.
Yeah, I love it. I don't want to dwell on it, but I do have two questions about the COVID situation.
Danielle did, too, if she is back.
Yeah. First of all, the positive pool, I'm interested that that happened. And did the process after identifying the positive pool, did that all go smoothly?
It did.
With identifying and then isolating what, you know, who was positive in that pool?
It did, yeah, that went very smoothly.
And that was all asymptomatic testing, right?
Yes, it was.
Wonderful. My second question is just that if we know, or how are we investigating if there has been in-school transmission?
Yeah, so we don't know for sure. I would say at this point, it's probably likely. There, you know, we, when we were made aware of some of the cases that were isolated, we knew where that was coming from outside of the school. And with some of the developments today, it appears that, you know, we don't know, we can't directly trace back outside of the school. So that leads me to say it's possible, and I would say likely, that that has occurred.
So you're working with, like, Jean, the Board of Health, and the COVID coordinator?
Yes.
On contract tracing, all those things?
Yep.
Those were my questions about.
Yeah, and just as an update to that, the contract tracing piece is a little more tricky because they can't initiate that until, so we give rapid tests when we do the follow-up. So the rapid tests are not, and I may be speaking incorrectly, but I believe this is the case, until it's entered into Maven from a PCR test, the contract tracing on that level can't initiate. So we've done the first steps that we can do as a school to identify close contacts to those who we know are positive.
So then, once the PCR tests are done and they go through and they take, like, hours at best and days, maybe then Claudia, the COVID coordinator, will get that through Maven and she will do all of the external.
Yes, and so that's when it goes beyond just the school to, okay, you know, who you've encountered with all those pieces, too.
That makes sense. I love the rapid tests that we have. I think Test and Stay is an awesome program. Too bad about that PCR, it slows things down a little, but I'm really glad that we're, like, identifying things early, so.
Is it safe to assume that because you're going to have almost 90 kids potentially doing test and stay come Monday, that the plan for that's going to go out sometime Friday?
Yes, yeah, we're going to spend some time with that. I'll spend some time working with Nurse Jean on that and really kind of nailing that down. Yeah.
Do we still have enough supplies to support this?
I believe we do. I mean, we had, what, six pallets, you said?
Right, I was going to say, maybe we need an extra pallet.
We're good.
Awesome. I don't know if Danielle.
I had, oh, go ahead. Questions about the COVID situation. One, my question is how do we determine if somebody is a close contact? I know we were told CDC guidelines, but CDC guidelines is 15, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, 15 minutes unmasked inside, less than six feet?
Yeah, so what we've been doing, and which has been working, is we do six feet kind of circumference around someone who has, people who we think have been within that range for more than 15 minutes. For close contacts, that's what DESI has, that's what they've said for close contact with masks, that's why we do test and stay. Because in this case, we have a few lower-level classes with a few different cases. So if that's the case, you have overlapping circles, that's when we start to get larger, you know, larger groups. So if we have a, you know, if we have a classroom that has several, you know, several students in it that have tested positive, we may say, you know what, we're going to consider the whole class, in this case, a close contact, because, you know, when you factor in movement throughout the day and you factor in where kids are sitting on the rug and where kids are sitting at the desk and where, you know, there's a lot of times where someone might be sitting six and a half feet away, they're assigned seats, but throughout the day, they may, they may be in that, you know, that bubble for more than 15 minutes. Yeah, and then we also.
Am I correct in assuming that they're usually, I mean, they're masked, right? Because we're masked inside?
Yeah. Yeah, so test and stay in close contact are, we do include if they're masked, yeah. Yes, they don't have to be unmasked to be considered test and stay or a close contact.
Okay. And that's fine. Is there any way we can get our policy, like, just put up on a door so that people can know? Because I think a lot of people are confused with what we're following and why, because I think a lot of people thought you were only in close contact if you were unmasked.
Yeah, we can find a way to get that information out there, yeah.
And snack and lunch are periods where we have kids that are unmasked, and even though recess is outdoors, there's periods of time, and so.
Yeah, so the tracing, it goes beyond just the classrooms, too. We go with, we look at the lunch charts, the seating charts in the lunchroom. We look at, you know, we look at the, you know, where kids are sitting when they eat snack within the classroom, too.
Right, yep. Thanks, Connor. I know it's been a lot of work and you probably didn't have much of a weekend.
That's all right.
My other question, I'm sorry, I was busy with my patient, but my other question was, Mr. Buckland, I've heard some concerns about the shelter-in-place situation. If you could elaborate on what happened with that?
Good, yes. I haven't heard any concerns, but I'm glad you're bringing them to our attention. So we had a positive return from a test and stay, and immediately we looked to where the student had been, and we felt that the best way to keep everybody in one place so we could identify classmates and close contacts was to have a shelter-in-place. And we had shelter-in-place for about an hour while we went through the pool testing consents and got consent for test and stay. And then we carried on with the day. And that was the closest, it was a shelter-in-place so that movement in the high school is schoolwide. So you might be going from room 95, from 96, doing Spanish, to all the way over to room 28 to do physics. You're going to be going through everybody, cutting through the commons, changing your cohorts, mixing groups, et cetera, et cetera. So to mitigate any possible in-school contamination, we felt it was the safest way and the easiest way to keep everybody in one place, so we could go through class by class, person by person, get out, get them consent, and get them tested, and get them back into school. And we didn't return a single positive test during that process.
Sure, I totally understand. I think maybe the frustration came was that there were students, like, locked in the classroom in a shelter-in-place and didn't understand what was going on. And then not everybody got notification at home. So I'm not criticizing or anything, I'm just saying, maybe next time we have a little bit better communications, so people aren't freaking out.
Yeah, no, I totally hear you. It was me running the show on Friday, and I was planning ahead for the sports games on Saturday because we have to test and stay for day two for possible kids in close contact, and we continue to do that. So there's a whole bunch of variables there that we couldn't act on until we knew the result of a soccer game in the afternoon. So there was a weird timeline there. But yeah, I think that one of the things, we already had a meeting about, you know, reviewing the processes, and one of the clear things is to make sure that we have the community communication at the end. But I think, you know, I was beyond thinking at that point in the day, so that was on me.
I got a couple of phone calls as well. And apparently, it was unfortunate timing that you had a Wi-Fi outage during that shelter-in-place. One parent called me because their student was very anxious about the shelter-in-place and not being able to text home and say what's going on. And so there were some concerns with that, and then the parent didn't know why or that it had even happened. So I just wanted to share that with you as well.
I appreciate you sharing, yeah.
But I totally understand that in the moment, you know, you need to do that, and there's a lot of things happening, so I don't know how it can happen again, that by the end of the day, before the kids go home.
Yeah, I mean, I think the other pieces from five past nine to 10:30, that was the lockdown. At the end of the lockdown, I made the announcement publicly. At the beginning, I didn't. I wanted to go around room by room and just let teachers know quietly, because, you know, you're not going to say we're now in lockdown because that's going to cause even more panic. And it was just, I think it was a, yeah, it's an easy fix to.
And emailing, a blast email out to the parents to let them know.
Yeah, I think me being the only person in the office at that time limits the amount of things that I can do at only one time. So yeah, I think we can work on that.
Great.
Thank you, guys. You did a really good job. I know it's been a crazy week.
Yeah.
I just had one last, just clarifying thing. We are following the DESI protocols for testing and identifying and all these in-school things, but outdoor, we're not tracking the playground. There's no outdoor, no, okay. Because I did also have people be like, oh, they must have been exposed on the playground, but that's not.
And we did have, we did ask students to wear masks on the playground this week, just for the short term, while we were trying to get a handle on things. But, no, we don't, we don't do, we don't consider outside contacts, no.
And that was my question, are we looking at, now seeing this uptick in numbers that we have, are we making any changes to our day-to-day operations? Are we looking at seating in the cafeteria? Are we looking at the way that our desks are set up? Are we?
Yes, we'll be looking at that.
Exactly, on Friday for me?
Yes, that's part of what we're going to be talking about on Friday as well.
Debrief meeting on Friday.
Yeah, and the hope would be to do, you know, any of those changes, because for the short term, while we kind of get this in the rearview, because I think we have, we've all seen the benefits that some of the flexible seating can have to students, that, you know, having those groups on the rug and having those groups can have. We know that, we know that's best practice. And we now have to make sure that we're doing what we can to put this one down until we can, so we can get back there. But yes, we'll be looking at that on Friday.
The biggest help for us will be getting more people signed up for pool testing.
Have we seen any uptick in those numbers?
Small uptick, but not as much as we'd like.
We have seen a lot of students getting vaccinated, I would say. I've heard a lot of parents know that younger kids are eligible. A lot of students going, going that route, too, which is great.
I just had one more question about the SEL new hire. Is a, like, in what specialty or?
So he's a special educator, yeah, so he's working in a special education program.
Is that a new headcount?
It is, hopefully temporary, but.
Okay.
If we had an immediate need.
Right. Shall we move to Director Bremner?
And some of what I'm going to talk about probably will shed some light on that. So I wrote this out because, as you can tell, we've all been quite busy, and I don't want to misspeak. So this update has more of an HES focus and includes information about all students with those with identified disabilities and without. We, when we consider the term disability in schools, we always consider the impact on learning. And as we're back in school, special ed administrators across the country are navigating if what we see in a struggling learner is due to a disability or another factor. And the pandemic has made this decision-making process difficult, and to that end, you'll hear me say, for years to come, the term "students" means all students first and foremost. We've identified that we need to prioritize social, emotional, and behavioral needs of students, and students can't learn when they're unable to access instruction. Across all the tiers at HES, we've been developing more supports, and we're looking into continuing to build our identification and curriculum resources for all students through grant opportunities to supplement previously budgeted funds. At a CES early childhood meeting last week, which is through the collaborative, we talked about both school and community access issues for our youngest learners in Hatfield and the surrounding towns. When students have periods of behavioral crisis, there are layers to the outside support available to families. This includes agency supports, like CSO and other local agencies like ServiceNet, but also hospital supports. And the partial hospitalization program locally at Bay State has shifted to supporting only upper elementary and older students, which is a change. And the community-based acute treatment beds, the CBAT beds locally in Springfield, are only accepting age 10 and up at this time. So the other piece is that the specialized outside educational placements are very limited right now, both in their ability to accept students, but particularly are the youngest students. There's not cohorts of youngest students in most of the local special ed outplacements. At our DESI function last week that we, that Michael and I attended, it's a roundtable group, and we were able to advocate to Russ Johnson about ongoing collaboration between state agencies like DMH and DCF being vital in understanding the needs of students compared to available resources. We also discussed how rural schools do not have the breadth of positions that suburban and urban schools have, which impacts our response to family and student needs outside the academic realm. As student and families continue to navigate access to mental health resources in the community and manage the stressors of what is still very much an impacting pandemic, we need to create as many opportunities ourselves to support learners of all ages. This Friday, HES will be working with our clinical staff to define and expand Tier One instructional strategies. So those are things available to all students in the classroom, including a take-a-break spot and the zones of regulation in all classrooms. These are supportive practices and meant to build skills. We have been expanding previously taught lessons by the clinical support staff that are made available for the entire class, and we're tailoring and targeting student needs through counseling services, consultations, and individualized supports for Tier Two. This has included partnering with a local ABA agency to provide updates to individualized plans in recent weeks. When considering our students with the most significant needs, we are working to develop programming that meets the needs that do not fit previously programming onsite, especially for our youngest learners. They're really, they're, we need to do it ourselves, and I think we can do a good job at it. We are making progress, we're responding proactively, and as needed, when social conflicts or behaviors are presented across PK to 12. But this year is posing what was anticipated, but bigger challenges. I would like to plug some supports for our earliest learners. The Hatfield Library has a playgroup that is offered on Thursdays, 10:30 to 11:45, for ages zero through five, and they partner with CES. And families who have any number of interests, concerns, or needs can access other community supports through that venue as well. And to continue to support our needs, we still have two open positions for repair professionals at Smith Academy and one at HES. So those were reposted today. But this is something that we're all working very hard at all levels to pull together. And it was great that the timing worked, that we could advocate at the state level and identify that we have some real gaps in our local area, particularly in the 10 and under age group. And that was what I wanted to say.
Thank you so much. What questions do committee members have?
So as you talk about the.
So as you talk about the zones of regulation and some of the, the work that's going on there across the school, it's correct. Is there going to be a parent communication for that piece as well? Just thinking about shared vocabulary you can use at home so it marries up?
Yep. So the Zones offers a list of definitions, and Nicole LaFleur, our counselor, will be putting together some information, take-home information. So you may see it come in backpacks first, more than anything. And the Zones is not new to HES, but it was kind of, this will be done with fidelity, and it will be at the, at Tier One and in a, in a way that connects all the tiers. And, and same with the take-a-break spot. So, and that offers sensory materials and gives kids practice time to self-regulate and is a space that they can use as they need and come back and forth, so.
And to be inside their classroom doing, so that's awesome.
The new hire, is this person going to be working with groups or individuals?
It, it varies, and we're identifying those needs as we, as we come up. And maybe next time, we can give a bigger update. Right now, they're focused on a very small number.
I'm not sure if this is a question or a comment. But so when you're, when you're talking about the PD that's going to be presented on Friday and how it's related to tiers, you're referencing the zones of regulation and the social, emotional learning. But there's also, you know, one of the big challenges, I think, coming back, well, one of the big challenges I know coming back in this year, right, is having kids that missed out on essentially a year of instruction. And the guidance had been, you know, we're, we're assessing and we're moving students forward academically based on what is traditionally taught at that grade level. And so we need to, right, be looking at the academic assessment and what we're asking students to do on a daily basis, because certainly they're going to become anxious and dysregulated and aggressive when they're in an environment and they're being asked to do things all day that they simply cannot do. So I just, I, I think I have an idea, but I just want to make sure that we're looking at this through both lens of tiered, tiered academic support in the classroom for what are the needs of this classroom here? And how are we meeting that with tiered gen ed support, small group, special ed push-in versus having, you know, this trajectory, which worries me, that all of these kids are going to end up social, emotional nightmares and in special ed because we're pushing forward, you know, for our really young kids, we're pushing things forward that they're not capable of doing. So how do we, how do we head off before kids need Zones? How do we make sure that academically we're presenting what we should be presenting so that they're feeling supported in what we're asking them to do every day and not necessarily having to tap into Zones support?
I wouldn't, I very much agree. And I will say that in the description of what we need to support, it's, it's tricky due to the number of sites. I want to make sure I'm protecting confidentiality. But we have, as you know, we have the STAR program for students who have significant learning needs. The students that we're looking, that we identified we needed to support in a different way are students who are at, are at or above grade level essentially, but having significant social, emotional needs. So in the traditional and actually built, built up, we've been building up and kind of reorganizing a little bit, our academic supports and interventions, we've been able to make suggestions for lower-level social needs easily and adjusting to academic demands if that was the trigger. There was this other population that needed more support that maybe at times would have accessed these external supports that are no longer available in the community. So I guess that's the best way I can put it at this time. But I, I very much agree with what you're talking about, and I understand that the academic demands obviously can be a trigger. I think we're doing a pretty good job on doing the interventions, and the staff are doing a great job in understanding the accelerated roadmap in that where we are moving forward, but we pause, dip under if we need to, and then continue. I see that most, I'm hearing a lot in the younger grades, particularly around the new math curriculum or updated math curriculum, that it's pretty word-heavy. And we had kindergarten, first, second graders that didn't shift from the learning to read to reading to learn. And so staff just are giving the accommodation of reading everything to everybody so we can keep on the math road while filling in the reading still. So I feel like the staff are doing a really nice job of mitigating some of those issues. And when it feels like we're stressed, that's an indicator to pull back and reteach and take a moment to look back at, well, what skills did we miss? And HES has pretty good, like we talked last time, we have a number of screeners and tests between the DIBELS, the DRA, the diagnostic in math and the writing, where we can see where everybody is. And so particularly the younger grades, which is the, the grades that we suddenly have lost some community support around, that they're able to make little groups, they're all doing centers and groups, and it's really going along nicely. We just happened to notice this other separate population that academically is in, in pretty good shape but had higher needs.
I'm also wondering too, because it just, you know, everyone's kind of in the same position. Is there any talk at these collaboratives of not, not, you know, private school placements, but other districts that have in-house programs where we're collaboratively working?
So of the students who are outplaced in Hatfield, about half are placed in local other schools, local public schools. So kind of, I think of the towns around us, we, we may have somebody there. So about half of our outplace students are in a public school that has a program that we don't have.
Right, thank you.
Could we then take the program you're thinking that you're starting to cultivate, which would then be an opportunity to help offset in time?
Absolutely.
And that's, I know from a budget standpoint, that's a huge benefit to us that we've had. John Robert did an excellent job finding ways to really help mitigate costs.
Right.
By finding some relationships there.
We, and we do have the Specialized STAR program as well. So it's a matter of, as somebody who ran a specialized program in a, in a public school, it's always the conversation of adding, making sure that adding in isn't taking away from our residents, you know, in that same way, and recognizing, you know, what, what spots are available. But it's certainly something that we've been discussing.
All right, thank you so much. Did anyone have any other questions? I will also say that Danielle contacted me that she had to head up, so. All right. Thank you so much to all of our administrators for being here. We really appreciate it. The next item on our agenda is a brief discussion of the MCAS results. Superintendent Wood, I don't know if you need the principals to stay?
Well, yes, I would. But it's really about you, giving you time to have looked at the presentation and if you had any follow-up questions for the principals and I that could answer. You know, so it's really dependent on what, what questions you, you had. We have no more to present.
Did committee members have follow-up questions?
I have one short one, I promise. And I think, just covered half of it. And so my real curiosity is I went back through and looked at the MCAS stuff and thinking about how we test in-house and, and how that gives us a much more fluid understanding of what's going on. And so DIBELS clearly does that for literacy. What is the math equivalent of that? Or is there a math equivalent of that?
Yes. So, and that's, that's something that we have just started implementing since the last time we spoke. And that's, what we're using this year is the Success Maker Program. So there is, that, that provides, it's, it's, it's an adaptive assessment. So the, the students will log in and they, the goal is 15 minutes, three times a week. So it's kind of like Alexia or kind of, you know, some sort of practice program. But the first chunk of time where they're logging in for 15 minutes is a diagnostic adaptive assessment. And what that will do is it will, you know, they'll have different kinds of questions that are in different strands of math learning. So it will identify specific areas where, hey, this student's really strong in, you know, this particular area, but they, they have gaps in this area. And it will give a report to the teachers that they can see and say, okay, I know that, you know, Stevie, Joey, and Suzie, they are, you know, they are great in fractions, but they need some work in converting that to decimals. And so they, they will have adaptive practice that's provided through the program, and their teacher will have a report that, hey, this is an area where this group of kids can, can use some extra growth, extra support. So that would inform a teacher's practice where they could say, hey, you know, I'm going to pull this group, we're going to do some, you know, some work for a while on, on this specific thing. So there's that piece. That's for kind of the in-class portion. The, the, what I mentioned before was we also have diagnostic and intervention kits that align with our program. And those are more, more, that's more of like a tier kind of two intervention. So not, not every student would get that, but if a teacher says, hey, this student is really struggling in math, they would bring, bring the student to the B, Building Support Team, and we might recommend as a team that they take one of the, the specific intervention diagnostic assessments. And then that, the kit is really kind of very targeted. It's almost like a, like a DIBELS math. It really kind of zeroes in on very specific number sense skills and other skills. It has very clear, very clear lessons and supports that a teacher can put, that the interventionists can put into place and say, this is, you know, we're going to do this really focused work for the next, you know, six, eight weeks, and then see if we can build the skills in those really specific areas. So not every, not every student will, will get that because not every student needs that. But we'll be identifying the students that do need that and then providing that support throughout the, throughout the remainder of the year.
What, what's a reasonable timeframe for you to start to see any kind of trend that you would bring back to us for something like that?
A while. You know, we're not talking, you know, the next month or month after.
Maybe next year, if that's the answer, that's what I want to understand.
I mean, I think, I think we'll, you know, we'll, we'll look, you know, throughout the year, we can provide updates, and we can provide updates on where, where kids are and progress that we're seeing. Individually, we'll see, you know, we'll see individual reports of student growth. But, but the, the growth is going to be different too. I mean, if you have a student receiving some of that intervention, they're, you know, you're going to hope for different growth than you, than you might see, see elsewhere too. So it, you know, we can, we can try to kind of quantify that in a certain way and do that throughout the year. But it's, you know, this is, we're, the, the gaps that we're seeing, they're long, they're not, you know, this is something we're going to hit in, you know, the next two months and, and fill all those gaps. These are, you know, these are, are gaps that are, they're significant and they, it's going to, it's going to take a, you know, kind of a multi-year effort to get, to get where we need to go. And it's going to take a lot of work. So that's, that's what we're going to do.
Do you post anywhere where you're doing, where you're doing the screeners? Or is it just, is the notification to parents in the community just if their student has been flagged?
Well, so if we, if we identify someone for intervention, then we will, we'll let the parents know. So we'll, we'll say, hey, you know, we've identified so-and-so is needing a little extra support, we'd like them to work with so-and-so, you know, this number of times a week, similar to what we do with reading intervention. That hasn't started this year. So we're in the, we're in the beginning stages right now of getting our, our interventionists the training that they need to, to provide that support and getting that, those assessments, those assessments done for those students.
You don't, do you, in your, in your weekly communications, like, put on there that you've started benchmark testing for whatever, or you usually talk about?
We haven't, no, we haven't done that in the past. It's something we could, we could certainly do, you know, to provide, you know, that piece of an update when we're doing, when we're doing the benchmarks. Yeah, that's, that's, that's not something that I've done in the past, but it's not something that I would be opposed to doing.
I think it would be helpful.
Sure.
I think I asked mine last time. So, thank you so much. I guess that's going to cut out if you'd like.
Thank you so much. Good job.
Thank you. Leave you with our appreciation.
Sleep in tomorrow. Our screens all went down.
They're just blue.
I think everyone, did everyone leave?
Maybe.
Oh, maybe it's because my screen went asleep. There we go.
All right. All right, we'll move along to policy. Once you're ready, Jen.
Sure.
You can wait for the commotion to die down. We're almost there.
Good night, guys, thank you.
Thank you.
Good night.
Is there a vote tonight, or is tonight an update?
Quick update.
Okay. Groovy.
Yeah.
All right, ready? So, policy met November, November 2nd, before, before all the, right before all the, the action started. We were joined by Nurse Jean virtually, Liz Kugler was there with us. We discussed that the Board of Health would likely be in support of keeping the mask mandate till January 15th. We talked about the, we talked about the survey results that were sent out to staff that at Smith Academy looked as if we were very close to that 80% to apply for a mask mandate.
Mask waiver.
A mask, sorry, a mask waiver. But then there's the potential there, though, with those preliminary numbers, that it didn't necessarily include all adults that are working within the building. So we discussed a need to really start to look at and put together data to let us know how close we are to the 80% to be eligible to apply for a mask waiver should we want to do that. So we discussed asking for individuals within both buildings to voluntarily submit their proof of vaccination so that we could start to pull together and look at numbers and see are we even eligible at this point to apply should we choose to do so in the future. We discussed the need for policies. If we do do that, on moving forwards, for how, how and who is going to monitor who, who is a vaccinated status and who is not for wearing masks and not wearing masks. With the, with the, with kind of the consensus at that meeting, that it's just that, you know, building administrators and teachers are doing so much already that it's, it would likely need to be, you know, on your honor because there's, there's not really anyone available in the buildings to be chasing people down to wear masks or not wear masks.
Nor would we have access to their personal health information.
But wait a minute, that's for adults, right? Because the student population, my understanding is that school nurses do have vaccination status for students.
Through MIIS, yes, but I'm just saying, I mean, Jean is not going to walk around in force.
Right, I'm not saying Jean's going to, going to go through the hallways, but in terms of determining whether we're getting to 80% or?
For students, yes, we already have that data.
Okay.
But that's why that, the MIIS system does not cover adults.
Correct, yeah.
Right, so that's why. Sorry, Jen.
No, no, that's okay. And then just looking at whether we need to draft policies, looking at tests to stay for unmasked individuals than our direct contacts with someone who, who tests positive for COVID. So really, in summary, just look. So really, in summary, just looking at asking staff within the buildings to voluntarily give their proof of vaccination status to see if, if it's even a possibility at this time to move forward and ask for a mask assumption.
Thank you, Jen. Well, Kristy or Kathy, do you have any questions?
No, and the packet info was helpful, so.
Yeah.
I'm assuming, I guess, you guys are, everything's still lining up with the DESI policy because it would have to line up with the DESI policy.
And, you know, as we talked about it, like Jen said, I mean, we don't even have, DESI really is looking into this data. You know, if people submit a waiver, they, you have to present some kind of data and the only information we had from adults was from an HTA survey, I think.
Right, informal survey.
So.
I would anticipate people being really helpful on that front, I guess, but.
Yeah, we'll, we'll see what happens.
I think too that just that information will be helpful.
Yes.
To know our people forthcoming and how manageable is that process for checking?
Yeah. It was a good meeting, thank you for presenting. And I especially appreciated, you know, Nurse Jean and Liz Kugler for joining with us. They've really been working with us this entire school year so far. It's been really great. All right, Danielle had planned on presenting the budget as listed, but she, I know, asked you to.
She did.
Asked you to help out because of the circumstances tonight.
Fair enough. And so we did meet on the 5th and the big takeaway, so we talked last time about how we're looking to get sort of better reporting that can go back out to the full committee so that it's just more information, less data. And part of that is understanding how our system's working. It integrates with town. And so Superintendent Wood has been very diligent and going through and talking with town and understanding what's going on on that front. And they're probably making some changes. And so we're going to put pause on some of the things that we would potentially do because it would not make sense for the school district to move ahead and make any kind of changes in our budgeting, accounting kind of world while they were potentially going to shift to a different system. And so Michael's done a great job to follow up and learn more with Taylor and we're going to, we're continuing to work on options to have better info. And we've started doing some deep diving into things like student headcount and just looking at long trends. So again, it's not the short-term conversation, but sort of the long-term outlook in terms of how our percentage of school choice students versus our general population in Hatfield and where that, where those trends are going. And starting those conversations of like, well, what does that mean for us as a, as a district financially? So it's not a lot of detail, just to, but that's where the conversations are.
And you're talking about like our budgetary processes in terms of changes? That's what you were talking about?
I'm talking about just also things that would impact our future budgeting process, like student enrollment data, stuff like that.
Sorry, I meant like when you were talking about we're waiting for town.
We're waiting for town about budgetary process. It's all about process and, and the tech that we use to do it, right? It's not about our actual, where we're funding, what we're funding, how much we have. It's just the process by which we manage that, have visibility to it, et cetera. So that, you know, we could be looking at cost center roll-ups and fluctuations in that versus line by line.
Right.
Because it's a lot of information that may or may not prove useful. Do you want to add in?
Yeah, just to complement that piece of the conversation, in most experience that I've had in terms of reporting on budgets, the, the school committee upon recommendation by the superintendent, the business manager identifies what they call control accounts. And whatever rolls up into those control accounts, the lines, what you get is the control account. So you always know that, and it gives then the administration some latitude around spending, obviously spending limits, no transfers can be made, you know, transfers can be made within those control accounts, but they can't be made between control accounts, things like that without school committee authority. But it just, it just makes it cleaner for the school committee to, and like, Kristy said, you know, it allows you to kind of have a, really that 50,000-foot view on the very specific totality of the budget by looking at fewer lines.
Right. So I imagine you could learn everything you needed looking at one page instead of like trying to weed through line by line.
Library expenses.
So, I mean, there's a lot of data there. And if you spend a fair amount of time, you, you get what you need.
Yep.
But there's probably simpler ways.
Fair enough. Other questions from anybody? No, no, I'm good, thanks. All right, wonderful, thank you. All right, we will go to other items requiring school committee action. Just wanted to go over our future meeting dates. So we have identified the second Wednesday for our primary meeting and the fourth Monday as our backup meeting. So I had penciled in December 8th and 27th, but was there interest in changing that or are we just wanting to make sure we're all on board?
Did you say the 27th?
Is the fourth Monday. But that's during the school break.
Yeah.
So we can leave it off. Hopefully, we don't have to meet then. You know, it's our reserved spot, but.
I would love to see a backup date not come in the middle of a holiday, particularly for administration, should we need it.
And for us.
Yeah, for everyone, but.
Yeah, well, and that's very, that's very close to Christmas Day too, so if people are traveling.
Yeah.
Can we back up just a second though? Are we going with November 29th? Or the 22nd?
I have it on the 22nd.
Okay.
As the fourth Thursday, sorry.
So.
I mean.
You'll decide whether we need that meeting?
Yep.
November 22nd. So. 8th and maybe the 20th?
If that's better, I'm, yeah, we can do the 20th, that's like.
And again, if we don't need it, we don't need it.
Right. I'll double check with the town, but hopefully that's fine.
And January would be.
The 12th and the 24th? Do we want to keep going? We can? So February would be the 9th and the 28th. I am supposed to be out of town on the 9th, but.
The 24th of January is just that, it's, that's our reserve date, but that's the only other day that I, the only other night that I have class that I.
All right, I mean, hopefully we won't need it. Or we can try for the 31st if we'd rather. Like I said, I just need to talk to the town about it.
I have class the 31st too, sorry.
Okay. Sorry. I mean, like I said, it's kind of our reserve date, so hopefully. Maybe as we get closer, we can look at it and see if we're anticipating a need or we can put it on another time. All right, anything else about scheduling? All right, well. Hearing nothing further, I would like to make a motion to enter executive session and not return to open session pursuant to MGL, Mass General Law, Chapter 39, Section 23B to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the government's bargaining or litigating position. Also, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel to actually conduct collective bargaining and contract negotiations with non-union personnel.
Second.
We will take a roll call vote.
Maloney, aye.
Bench, aye.
Pedro, aye.
Eagle heart, aye.
Jen, thank you so much.